Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for being with us. I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. It is the regular council meeting on October 6th. Doctor Crawford, can you verify we have four members?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. At this time, President Brown shall give a... Thank you, sir. Can you provide us with an indication, please?
I sure will. Don't we have a break, city? Let's pray together. Father, I just thank you for this evening, each and every person that's here tonight. I believe that they're here with the intention for unity and to make things better here in Jasper. God, I pray over our council, and I pray over Mayor Raffield right now, that you would give him wisdom and understanding, that you would make integrity a top priority. Lord, I just thank you for the opportunity we have. Lord, I pray over families, I pray over businesses, the owners of those businesses. I pray over our schools, our churches, that you'd pour out your blessing, that people would come together to do the very best of their ability to see Jasper be the greatest city in all of Georgia. We thank you for what you've done and what you have become this meeting, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Brown, would you please, please, sir?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on our agenda is a proclamation, one that I am very happy about. There's a proclamation for Serp Pickens Day. Whereas the Fourth Annual Serp Pickens Day, supported by several churches, civic groups, businesses, and many volunteers, will be held on Saturday, October 18th, in 2025. Whereas these nonprofits hope to make Pickens County a great place for everyone to live. Therefore, we can add our son proclaiming October 18th as Serp Pickens Day in Pickens County and the City of Jasper and support the work of Serp Pickens, its volunteers, and nonprofits. The chairman, Chris Antin, and I signed this with the Serp Pickens Board. I encourage everyone to look up their mission, and we certainly look forward to October 18th to service of our community. Council, given the agenda previously distributed electronically, I would ask for one amendment to that agenda. The amendment to the agenda would be the addition of item number 10 under new business, which would be a reservation and appointment of a DDA. Give the floor for a motion to adopt the agenda or change it. Motion is seconded, discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Both say. Thank you, council. Public comments. So same outlines as last time. Mayor will add public comment section of the agenda. This is not an unlimited public forum. The individual making the comment must be physical present, state their name and their address. Comments are limited to city matters. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. Mayor has the right to extend time. Your personal attacks are unwanted accusations. The mayor or providing officer has the right to in the comments or comments due to violations. Individual commenting can only exercise their public comment section of the meeting once. No individual can allocate or transfer their time for comment to another person. No inappropriate language, signs, or comments. And a comment period is limited to a total of 30 minutes. Would you have three individuals sign up this evening? And forgive me if I mess up your name. But I think I'm just going to skip here. I want to say Mr. Mark off of Teton Trail. I can't read your last name, so I apologize. Yes, sir. If I expect your name and address, please.
Mark Finney, 36 Teton Trail. I would like to withdraw my time, please, to make a statement.
Okay. Yes, sir. Moving on, Mr. David Chausse. Please, sir. Thanks, David.
David Chausse. No trouble at night. First, I want to thank all the councilmen, men and women, that do answer emails, even though sometimes we see any differences, try to come to happy resolutions, happy wisdom. What I want to address is two issues that I'm seeing right now. I've got an ongoing concern regarding public statements made by such a councilman. This councilman continues to make pride and negative references to developers, leaving the public with speculation about who he is referring to. Based on my research, the same councilman is in fact business partners with the individual or individuals I believe he's alluding to. If wrongdoing is occurring, then for the sake of transparency and public trust, name the individual or entity involved. Stop leaving the public to draw their own conclusions or unfairly cast judgment on others who may have gone wrong. It is simply not fair for the many developers, stakeholders, and investors who are working to create community-focused, value-added projects, where quality and integrity are the priorities, to be lumped into a vague, negative category. I also find it concerning the same councilman publicly stating on his own social media as far as back as 2019 that the city would only do business with reputable, honest, and legitimate developers. Yet the very project he now criticizes were undertaken after those statements and under his leadership. Their shoddy work is now coming at the taxpayers' expenses. I also want to go on the record that at times, this is election season by the way. When transparency is more important than ever, we have a councilman running for office who appears to be censoring the elected, or excuse me, the stakeholders.
Mr. Chausse, if you keep your comments...
Small-town America is no place for leadership. This silence is deferring opinions or discourages open dialogue. Furthermore, when a council member uses their social media page for official city business campaigning messaging or public notification, the U.S. Supreme Court has ruled that such use constitutes government action. The First Amendment protects citizens from censorship based on their viewpoints. The law is clear, when an official account is used for public communication, that official cannot block users or delete comments simply because they express criticism or defer to opinion. It appears we have a councilman in Jasper, Georgia, who considers himself above the suspended rule of constitutional protection and the law.
Next on the list, I have Mr. Samuel Slade. Hi, sir. Hello, your name and address?
Samuel Slade, 175 East Sellers Street. And good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. As you may recall, last month, I posed a challenge to all City Hall employees and council to participate in the Marvel Fest 5K, and then I would keep track of those that participated. And I'll present the findings and results. And on Friday, I came by to find out who signed up. To find out, nobody did. However, since I did participate in the 5K and I'm on the planning commission, I did run into Councilman Hannah, and so therefore, the results are...
Hope shaving your business, boy.
Despite being registered as 99 years old, somehow, Mr. Hannah came in at 37 minutes and 24 seconds. And I just edged him out at 32 minutes and 20 seconds. Hopefully, next year, I can get more people to sign up and participate, because I will pose this challenge again next year. Thank you.
The one comment I will add, Mr. Slade, and I do appreciate the challenge. There's another challenge going on at the exact same time, as most of us are volunteering for the festival of the radio. So unfortunately, most of us are working. I'm actually calling here later that day, so I appreciate the challenge, sir.
Excited.
Yes. My two days of work, your two days of work.
Good time, Brian.
Thank you for doing it. Next item on your agenda is a consent agenda. Give the floor for a motion.
Make a motion, consent agenda be approved.
Have a motion, I will say. Any further discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Both say. Thank you, council. This time, I will look at the public here. Item number one, does Ms. Burgess present? Ms. Ellie's with us. So Ms. Ellie, this actual item, they've asked for a continue, is that correct?
Yes, so we had two requests for annexation and rezoning by applicant SDH Atlanta LLC on behalf of Donald Silvers, Danny Silvers, and David Blinnett, which are the owners of 48.65 acres located at 773 Fairview Road. The applicants were requesting to annex the property into the City of Jasper and then rezone it from Pickens Plain Agricultural to City of Jasper Single Family Attached Residential to facilitate the development at a 220-minute time in the community. The applicant just recently completed the development of regional impact analysis through the State Department of Community Affairs. And so they can work through some of the findings of that analysis. They have requested to continue both items, the annexation and the rezoning, to the October 28th Planning Commission and the November 3rd City Council.
Is that what you said, October 27th?
I apologize. October 28th, Planning Commission, and November 3rd, City Council.
And that is for item number one. Can I add item number two?
Yes, we're following your request.
Item number one and two have to continue. Item number three, is the castle general by chance?
I do not believe so.
And that's accepted, have a...
Alright, so this was a request by applicant Summer Britt, who's also the owner of approximately 3.49 acres located at 581 Auburn Non-Growth. Ms. Britt was requesting to de-annex her property from the City of Jasper and annex it into Pickens County. However, upon staff's review of the application after it had been advertised, we noted that there's an intervening county-owned parcel within city jurisdiction that appears to pivot Ms. Britt from being able to de-annex. So we're currently working with the city attorney to see if there's another alternative path that she could pursue to continue on with her application. So accordingly, Ms. Britt is requesting to withdraw her application to amend it.
Do you want from the applicant to like to discuss the withdrawal of that application? Thank you, sir. Item number four.
Alright.
Well, here is the applicant for a motion.
Yes, Mr. Finney.
Would the advocate like to speak to you? Good evening, Serp Pickens County, your name and address?
My name is Gordon Anzogali. My address is 204 Sherman Drive in Kenton. I am planning to relocate my business and then my custom cabinet shop to the district of the Walmart area. And that's what this application is filed to get the special use permit for.
Thank you, sir. Any other partner?
I'm excited to have my business up here.
Alright. Thank you, sir. Ms. Ellie?
Alright, so this next item for you is a request by Mr. Cortelli on behalf of 71 Confederate Avenue LLC, which is the owner of properties located at 71 Confederate Avenue. Mr. Cortelli is here requesting a special use permit to allow more custom cabinet manufacturing on the property. So a quick overview of the site context. The subject property is located within the Mountain City Business Park, which is just south and east of the Walmart. The property is approximately three-quarters of an acre in size and is improved within approximately 6,000 square foot office and warehouse building. The property is zoned C2 general commercial and is served by City Water and Sewer. It is accessed from Confederate Avenue, which is the sort of spine rather than the Mountain City Business Park. So a bit more of the site context from the ground. As you may be familiar, the Mountain City Business Park accommodates numerous other more intense sort of manufacturing, warehousing, automotive, and business operations. So examples of these include the Grand Max Dental Supply Store to the north, the Waylock Customs Auto Restoration Facility to the east, Power Solutions Unlimited Electrical Contract to the south, and then Aquatic Environmental Services to the west across Confederate Avenue. So the applicant, Mr. Cortelli, submitted this special use permit request on behalf of his business, Cortelli Custom Woodworks, which manufactures custom cabinetry. His business currently operates out of Forsyth County, but he's looking to relocate to Jasper to be more central to his client base. And he'll be relocating three employees from his Forsyth County facility here to the City of Jasper. He also intends to hire some additional employees as well. So in the C2 district, cabinet manufacturing requires a special use permit, and this is just to ensure that it's compatible with the surrounding zoning and use context, because it is a slightly more intense sort of commercial operation that could produce odor or noise that is extensive ambient conditions. At this facility, Mr. Cortelli will be providing millwork for the custom cabinet manufacturing as well as staining and chemical finishing. I do want to note that any staining and chemical finishing would have to occur in a paint booth that is approved and inspected by our city. So when we evaluate a special use permit request, we look to the Pickens County Joint Comprehensive Plan, which designates this property as part of the Jasper RTL Commercial Corridor, designated use designation promotes free and efficient movement of traffic and goods. And given that this is a low traffic use within a commercially developed zone area, staff feels that this request is consistent with the Joint Comprehensive Plan. So at that, staff recommends approval of the request, subject to conditions. The first is, as I mentioned, that any staining or chemical finishing shall occur without the approval of a paint booth, that is, the Jasper Bar Commercial. The second condition, if apple storage is proposed, shall be screened by the pickets that's not likely to take heat in height. The third condition is that the employee parking area shall be restripped with an accessible parking space provided. The fourth condition is that a City of Jasper business license is required. The fifth condition is that all new signage shall be approved by the city. And the sixth and final condition is an acknowledgement of our ongoing temporary water and sewer suspension. However, this property has been served by City Water since 2019, and staff did not perceive issues with that continuing.
Thank you, ma'am. Do you want to hear the other gentleman like to speak on this? Item number five.
Alright, so the...
Could the advocate first?
Yes.
Hey, sir. Would you like to speak on this, or what staff for?
Oh, it's for...
Alright, yes, sir. Ms. Ellie?
Yes, alright. So the next item before you is a request by applicant or property owner Dave Terry for his property located at 319 Boulevard South. Mr. Terry is here requesting a variance to eliminate the requirement to place dumpster enclosures within the rear yard in a minimum of five feet per property lines. And the requested variance will accommodate the development at the key commercial shopping center of Mr. Terry's property. So the subject property is approximately two and a quarter acres in size and is located within the Gateway Plain Unit Development, just about a quarter mile north and west at the intersection of Highways 518 and Highway 108. As you can see here on the map, a portion of the overall Plain Commercial Project adjoining Mr. Terry's property has already been constructed by a separate developer. And while on this map, I do want to note that the subject property is unique in that it has three frontages. So it has about two frontages on Mountain Boulevard South to the west and the north. And then to the east, it has frontage on Highway 515. So a bit of the site context from the ground. The surrounding uses include the Lodge of Jasper, assisted living facility to the north, the North Georgia Gray facility to the east across Highway 515, the existing two-story commercial office building within the Greater Gateway Commercial project to the south, and then independent living pockets for the assisted living facility to the west across Mountain Boulevard South. So Mr. Terry is here this evening requesting a variance to eliminate the requirement to provide dumpster enclosures within the rear yard and no closer than five feet to property lines. So on this slide, I've included the conceptual rendering of the proposed commercial development that generally depicts where the proposed dumpsters will be located. As you can see, there will be two enclosures, one there along the north property line and then another there at the northwest corner of the property. So the general intent of this rear yard standard is to ensure that, you know, the dumpsters are placed in sort of a non-conspicuous, inconspicuous location where they're not blocking site visibility and they're adequately separated from property lines. But because Mr. Terry's property technically has three frontages, he doesn't actually have a rear yard for ours any limits definitions. Where he has a property line that does not adjoin the street frontage, it adjoins the commercial development to the south, which has a shared access drive. So if he were to locate the dumpsters along that property line, we would have potential site visibility issues as traffic maneuvers around the overall project. So accordingly, Mr. Terry is looking for variance relief to place his dumpsters in the proposed locations where they'll be better shielded by landscaping, but also, very importantly, will not block site visibility. Okay, so this is a snippet of the conceptual site plan showing the locations of the proposed dumpsters. It sort of portrays on Mr. Terry's property and actively adjoining property to the south, as I mentioned, which is already in the middle of it. So just to give you a little bit more context on this request, this is sort of a good example of how our zoning ordinance contemplates yards. This is an aerial image of the Body Test Fitness off of Noah Drive. So in this scenario, where there's only one frontage, you can see where it clearly makes sense to put the dumpster in my clear, clear and definite front, side, and rear yards. So our zoning ordinance, because of how it's written, essentially forces each lot to have one front, two sides, and one rear. But it doesn't work when the geometry is awkward, like in the case of Mr. Terry's property. So unfortunately, now, because of Mr. Terry's unique frontage condition, he has more front yards than a typical commercial property, making it difficult to find possible to place his dumpsters and compartments with our ordinance standards. So when we evaluate a variance request, we look to Section 94210 of his zoning ordinance, which outlines five criteria to warrant variance relief. The first criteria is that exceptional conditions pertain to the property in question because of its size, shape, or topography. Staff feels this is met, as a property has unique frontage condition that prevents it from achieving our zoning ordinance standards. The second criteria is that application of our ordinance to this particular property would create unnecessary hardship. Staff believes that this is met, since the property has three frontages and the existing shared access. There are limited locations where the dumpsters could be placed that will not interfere with site visibility. The third criteria is that such exceptional conditions are peculiar to the property involved. Staff feels that this is met, as the property's west, north, and east property lines all of a public right of way, which is a peculiar condition compared to other commercial properties in the city, like the one I just showed you. The fourth criteria is that exceptional conditions are not the result of the actions of the property owner. Staff believes that this is met, as the property's unique frontage condition was not created by Mr. Terry. And the fifth and final criteria is that relief, if granted, would not cause substantial detriment to the public good nor interfere the purposes or intent of our zoning ordinance. Staff believes here again that this is met, as the proposed refuse enclosures will be architecturally integrated with the proposed building and screened by your hard site landscaping. In addition, since there's not an intersection there, especially at that northwest corner, site visibility will not be impacted, which is probably the most important motivation behind this regulation. So at that, staff of the Planning Commission recommend approval of the request, subject to conditions. The first is that the dumpster closures shall be architecturally integrated with the proposed buildings. The second is that the dumpster area shall contain a cover or provide an oil-water separator to control pollutant runoff from the dumpsters. And then the third condition is an acknowledgement of our ongoing temporary suspension on the water and sewer connections.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone here in the public that would like to speak on this?
Alright.
I will close the topic here on that floor. Moving on the agenda, under old business, item number one. Mr. Melos, it is fair expected that I have asked for a continuance. Will you go over the dates of that continuance for the public's knowledge?
Yes, sir. So we will have the Planning Zoning Commission here on October 28th, and then the Council on November the 3rd. This again is requested by the applicant. And beyond that, may I believe, you all, because this has been going on a couple of two times, including old business, just to continue making sure that there's a record of accepting the...
Council, I undertake a motion to accept that continuance.
So...
Second. All in favor? Both say. The second one under new business, Mr. Melos, it's fair to say, same applicant, same dates?
Yes, sir.
Council, yield the floor for a motion to accept their... Any discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Both say. Thank you, council. New business, item number one. Ms. Ellie, you are heard. Requested by applicant. This is for a withdrawal, correct?
Yes, so the applicant, Summer Britt, is requesting to withdraw her application without prejudice to amend it, that she could potentially refile in the future once we have a solution worked out that provides her a path to the annexation.
And that applicant is not present in Jasper?
She is not.
Counsel, this is for the acceptance of the withdrawal without prejudice. Yield the floor for a motion.
So much.
Motion for a second.
Second.
Any discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Both say.
You speak.
Counsel. Item number two, consideration request for a special use permit.
Yes, so this is a special use permit request by applicant, Mr. Cortelli, for a special use permit to allow for custom cabinet manufacturing on property located at 71 Confederate Avenue. Staff and the Planning Commission recommend approval of this request.
And with that approval, there are conditions, there were six listed, is that accurate?
Yes, that's correct.
Fantastic. Counsel, yield the floor for a motion.
I'm not sure if you approve with the six, or I'm surprised.
Motion to approve with the six conditions, do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, council?
Mr. Cortelli, I don't know if you've attended our meetings before, but I have a question that I historically asked because I was led by the council to do it. Do you understand the conditions and accept them?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Any further discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Both say. Item number three, consideration request for variance of zoning ordinance.
So this is a request by applicant and property owner Dave Terry for a variance request to eliminate the requirement to provide dumpsters in the rear yard and within five feet of property lines. City staff and the Planning Commission recommend approval, subject to three conditions.
There are conditions listed out for this, council?
Yeah.
Give the floor for a motion.
The motion to approve with the three conditions?
Have a motion, I have a second. Have a motion and second for approval with conditions? Any further discussion, council?
David, do you understand the conditions and accept them?
I do.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both say. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
New business, item number four, consideration of Halloween on St. Paul's Event and Convention. This floor is open with me.
Can we leave all three individually?
Yes, may I?
Okay. Good evening, mayor, council. I am here on behalf of the Jasper National Authority Board. The first item is the event for Halloween, which has been named Halloween on St. Paul's. Logistics of this event would be that we already have the trick-or-treating on Main from 4:30 to 6:30. So this event would piggyback off of that and start at its end time. And then it would run until 10 o'clock. Cleanup should be back by 10:30, 10:45. So the biggest thing I want to point out is that we will ask... Normally, for trick-or-treating, the streets will reopen at 7 o'clock. The streets will still reopen at about 7:15, 7:30. So it's not going to really extend that time. The idea is to be able to send our public works staff home, and I will stay. So the only barricades will be left up after Josh and his guys go home is ones that I'll be putting up and taking down myself. So I'll be the only staff person that has to stay past about 7:30. I'll stay till the end. I'll clean up through all that on my own. So as not to keep their guys past business hours as much as possible and not to impact overtime, budget, etc. So we had no police overtime will be required. They have requested one OD or officer, but that is separate. Fire is not required, and I'll handle all of the resources and materials. So the event begins with a quote-unquote parade that will, that the new owners of the depot are allowing us to stage there. And they will come up from the depot and kind of make a U-turn on North Main so that the guys can begin closing South Main while this is happening. They'll circle South Main, go behind the public restroom, and come up to the back of Segal Alley at Markwood Field. The event will be held in Segal Alley in the intersection of Whitfield and Segal. So that'll be the beginning, and then we have so many things. They'll be showing Halloween movies. There will be bobbing for hanging apples. BJ Reese Orchard is coming down to make live caramel apples. There's a number of vendors, love. The Main Street vendors of Underground Etiquette, Dragon Ball will be coming up. Kelsey Taco, Henley Local House are all available in their rest areas. They'll be open. So that is the first event, are there any questions?
Just a comment, that's right.
Yes, sir.
No, I just wanted to, uh, thank you to David. I'm going to do a school unit event, and she reached out and saw a lot downtown spreading the word about this. So great job getting the streets. I just want to say, thank you for doing it, great.
Yes, we are very thankful for David. I care. I care for you back there, too.
I'm glad we're bonding for hours.
Yes, oh, and the Historical Society is letting us use the jail as well. They're going to have it open for ghost tours. And some of the performers, quote-unquote, would you say, like the tarot card readers? I think they're going to be, the whole jail's going to be posting them to do that inside while the ghost tours are going on. So we've kind of, they allowed David and I to come to their board meeting. And Dan Fool and Bill Cable have been helping us with that. So they're going to be involved in the event as well. Great.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, you have the floor for a motion for a approval for this event, as presented.
Make a motion to approve this event, as presented? Second.
Motion is seconded, discussion, council? Motion, second, any discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Both say. Thank you, counsel. Item number five, consideration of soup bean celebration.
So the, um, downtown authority board would like to kind of in partnership with, again, the historical society and the whole jail, and, uh, taking our cultural alliance will be hosting events on the same day, same time. Um, which I have some flyers that Pam's made up for that have all three listed. Um, they will be, they want to close what we closed for four and whole on Thursday. Uh, so what's closed for 5:15, four and whole every Thursday, that'll be the closure. Um, in this case, we're not asking for any additional city staff. I will not be at that event, I will be out of town, but the board is aware of that, so they agree to be set up and take down on their own. Uh, so no city staff should have to be involved, and I'll try to get everything out there before I leave for them. And I can pick it up, buy it back on Monday. Um, so this will be sort of a, you know, if you've heard of a chili cook-off. This was an idea that a few of the board members have on our promotions committee for the soup bean festival, and the proceeds benefit the DDA and the VFW. The VFW is involved as well, Pam, our vice chair of the board, has already reached out to them, and they're working together. So there will be vendors, um, live acoustic music, and then, uh, the contest, et cetera, so all of that. Uh, as I said, no staff, no resources, other than what I can do in the board. And you got.
Thank you, ma'am, any questions, counsel? Yield the floor for a motion for approval of the event, ask present.
Make a motion to approve the event, ask present? I get it.
Motion, second, any discussion, counsel?
I did hear this past weekend that, uh, it's not just soup beans, that people will be bringing corn, blessing, and so.
Cornbread, yes, lots of cornbread, yes. That is true, that's right.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both say. Thank you, counsel. Item number six, consideration, Mountain City Christmas.
This is the downtown development authorities' Christmas event, and it's on December 12th. No road closures are involved in this, no extra anything, uh, no staff, resources outside of myself, so no public safety, no public works. Um, I'll be there the whole time, assisting with anything that's needed. Uh, but it's just more of a, a themed shopping night. There will be decorating the streets from KTV and Jasper Fitness up to the, uh, restrooms and kind of around like the Roper's office uh, with candlelight shopping, so there will be luminaries, candles lit up on all the tables, on the restaurants, along the storefronts. And there will be some carolers, some bluegrass music. Am I missing anything? Yeah, okay. Uh, this is, uh, Brian and I will be working on this one, he's our Christmas guy. So, um, there'll be lots of fun decorations, flowers, unchur, and we're excited. So, um, since there's no road closures, it should be relatively gentle, we'll just be out there, so.
Any questions? Counsel, any questions? Yield the floor for a motion to approve, uh, for this, present.
So.
Second.
And a second, any discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Otis, sir? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Item number seven, consideration of purchasing police vehicles, Mr. Douglas, talk to the meeting, sir.
Mr. Mayor and counsel, and I do want to commend Carly and DDA for, um, continuing to draw interest to Main Street. Um, is that time of year where you notice Carly was just emphasizing that volunteers and are hurt. I do want to commend y'all for that because we do have a bunch to work with and overtime, et cetera. So I sincerely thank DDA for y'all's volunteer. Uh, it's nothing in your pockets other than just the love of, of your community, so thank y'all for that. Uh, Mr. Mayor and counsel, this is an item where Chief Dawkins is here, if you'd like to hear straight from him, but, um, he'll go ahead and tell you that, uh, we need way more than just one vehicle. Uh, but we had already encumbered, uh, the required amount in our special focus with pro option sales tax. So we always want to wait until to see how things continue to progress as we've got a few additional projects to deliver for the 2020 spots. We want to make sure that collections were continuing to run, uh, at least at the budget to, uh, inspect your mouths. As such, uh, we did go ahead and ask chief to, uh, get you together three quotes. Uh, in your packet, you'll see the three quotes you received. Uh, Prater Ford, $48,274.34. John Eagle Ford, $48,795. And Cross Ford, 53, $485. And this is for the Ford Explorer. Uh, I believe that the department was able to speak with the parent, um, low quote to make sure that we would be able to receive the vehicle, uh, because as you get towards the end of the year, they stop sending orders as normally these, um, motor companies will potentially start building different. So we do feel as though that if we're able to tell them tomorrow, uh, that it is approved to purchase, we can go ahead and keep that in order. Uh, you'll also see the equipment and lights, uh, that's everything basically turnkey. Uh, there's an additional cost like between 22 and 30,000. So we always say it's between 70 and 80,000, um, for police vehicles. Uh, and that is, um, in 20 years, I can tell you that that has certainly gone up from what I had experienced, um, in this role in city management. So, uh, I used to joke about the car department, um, being expensive, but now, um, the way that you have a little price, uh, 80,000 is what? But it keeps the, the men and women safe and perform their, their jobs. And, um, Chief Dawkins is ready to, take any questions if you want to, or that.
Counsel, do you have any questions, Chief Dawkins? At this time, uh, Mr. Melos, would it be safe to, um, seek a not to exceed of 80,000 for this purchase?
Yes, sir.
Counsel, yield the floor for a motion with an amount of not to exceed 80,000 for this purchase.
So much.
Motion, do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Both say. Item number eight, consideration of GDOT pole, Kemp, O. A.
Yes, yes, sir. So I will say, counsel, that I'm prepared to speak on this, and I'm not going to call, uh, Kemp out. But this is Kemp and Lori slipping my name over there to it. Um, so if I watch it, forgive me, but Kemp's ready to pick up the pieces. Uh, you may recall that, uh, the state, uh, Department of Transportation is, uh, moving forward with the state Route 53 big project. Uh, as such, we had executed the, uh, signal agreement for the new signal at Spring Street to Main Street. Uh, you all had made the condition December of last year to make sure the department knew that the, the poles would need to reflect the same color as in downtown and at Sandy McGeith. So GDOT did put that on the plan sheet, uh, for construction. And as with anything with anyone, if you request to go above and beyond what the standard is, standard detail in the plan sheets, they use the big galvanized steel looking poles, uh, we have to pay the cost differential. So they have submitted to us a memorandum of agreement to basically acknowledge that when they do replace the pole at Sandy McGeith and 53, along with the new installation at 53, or spring in the new 53s, uh, it's Main Street, um, along with some decorative light poles, that it would be a shade under $27,000 difference, so specifically $26,581.17. So before they have their legal department finalize the MOA, they just wanted to make sure that this is something that you all are receptive of. And beyond that, if you want to authorize the mayor, at which time they do have the final MOA, uh, to execute the document, uh, we can do that.
Oh.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, I want to yield before, uh, for the options, one is to approve the cost difference, 26,581.17, and approve me to execute the MOA once it's final and reviewed by legal. Um, or the second option is to not approve the difference at the MOA. Now you'll afford for a motion.
Make a motion where it approved the difference of 26,581.17, it's 76.
Does that motion include the execution?
And execute the, uh, MOA, yes, sir.
Thank you, sir, I have a motion to approve and execution when ready, Melos, second.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion, counsel?
I will, what do you want to explain, any problems?
Yes, what?
She's pregnant. Now, she's in.
So at this, at, at this moment, um, if it were to be the 2026 budget, 2027 budget, 2028 budget, we would just have to button accordingly. I think right now, the state has stated that they plan to let the project, meaning they authorize going from right of way to construction early summer of 2026. And I think construction to start sometime that fall or in the first quarter of 27. So what we would do is just make sure that we have a line item for 27,000 in our, um, street budget, uh, similar to the street light fees, et cetera.
That is, I wouldn't sure, we work up in this year.
No, we sure don't.
Thank you. Any further discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Both say.
Thank you, counsel.
Item number nine, discussion of work.
Yes, sir. So this is an item that, uh, we're just looking kind of as an FYI and to make sure that you're comfortable with it because candidly, we have encountered, uh, issue in terms of seeking, uh, competitive, uh, bids relative to certain projects, whether they're stormwater related, whether they're water on related. We have been able to do some projects, uh, below the required thresholds for our own purchasing policy to go out for the bid. Some we have thought the bid, they busted bid to where we just don't have the funds. So we are trying to be creative in creating some sort of on-demand construction services, whether it be for stormwater or other utility projects, to where we can have a on-demand contractor with unit pricing already embedded in. We have not done that in the city before, there are other communities that utilize this service. So because this is not something that we're fundamentally doing, I wanted to bring it to your attention that, uh, we do plan to coordinate with Mr. Syfren and developing the request of proposals to solicit, uh, these on-demand services, competitive unit pricing, uh, price per hour, equipment, et cetera. And then, when we do have budgets and monies, because we do have some lump sum monies in, uh, our utility, but we just don't necessarily have the ability to go out and, uh, bid, you know, every single thing above and beyond 50,000. Uh, and quite candidly, when you go out, does it a bidding? You've already seen where some of the prices come in, where we just have to reject the bid because they bust it because they know, hey, well, you're basically advertising, this is what you got, I'm going to do this, and then we don't get the project done. So at this point, our hope would be the November meeting, uh, we would be able to recommend, um, or at least by December 1, uh, have a vendor, um, on-demand, uh, mentoring. Uh, and that way we can kind of be going with some of these projects. We do think we have a solution for some of the stormwater, specifically of the three projects that we talked about of these last several meetings, uh, we're able to get a vendor in that's already mobilized, doing some work, uh, to keep it within the, um, less than the threshold for competitive deal. So just wanted to bring to your attention, unless y'all have any major objection, we're going to move forward with Mr. Syfren to, uh, help us, uh, with this process. And that way, goes with the next meeting or even the work session, um, you'll be able to be at focus.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, we will keep you up any second for persons. Item number 10, uh, under new business was added was the DDA appointment. Um, you know, everyone that is up here has served in some capacity, um, whether it be voluntary or public testable or other areas. And, uh, one of the areas that some of us have served on is the downtown development authority, if you get. That was, we shouldn't have to serve with those. Uh, some of you are standing in the back, so thank you for what you do. I had to go with Mr. Douglas from earlier. Um, and after my time on DDA, came to an end, uh, Dr. Proctor, your time on DDA began. And so that transition was really smooth, and it was very helpful. And our DDA is better today, but peasant transition, and now we're under a new transition. So, sir, I have accepted the letter of resignation from you, from our downtown development authority. And, uh, counsel, it is my, uh, recommendation for a new appointment, uh, Mr. Brandon Hatta to serve on that seat of the downtown development authority. And before I yield the floor for motion, I want to ask, uh, Dr. Proctor, do you have any comments about your time on DDA?
Oh, I just want to thank, um, the, the council and the DDA for allowing me to serve. Um, that was something that began, um, when this jury began, and it led to some of the important things that we've been able to achieve in the last several years, including an amphitheater, which has put on the 2020 referendum for spots. And, uh, also was part of the, uh, the, look for Main Street America, which I think is a program which does a proven track record and will, uh, serve as a economic driver for our downtown area and, uh, make our, uh, overall town a better place that preserves it both from the past and also protected for the future. But the main thing is I want to thank the DDA for allowing me to serve. Amy Sider here, I want to specifically, uh, thank Amy Lee.
The other half is here, I see you.
She's been my partner, uh, who's given some of these, uh, lofty ideas. And, uh, please, in my regards to her, always, so thank you very much, sir.
Yes, sir.
I'm excited about the replacement. He's going to be able to do the home job.
Counsel, I'm going to yield the floor for a motion to approve the employer. Uh, Mr. Brandon Hatta to your downtown development authority.
So.
Motion, second?
Second.
Anything, any discussion, counsel? Any final words, sir?
Final words, so, uh, funny coming in, uh, Carly already gave my homework. Not even, uh, fully in, and, uh, the work begins, but, uh, really excited to represent our city. I'm passionate about our downtown, I want our businesses to be, to do well, uh, to be able to stay open. And if I can support them in this, through this program, this organization, I'm excited, so. Looking forward to the next two years, and, um, can't thank, uh, the team enough for showing up tonight, so thank you, guys.
It didn't sit taking very long, folks. Have a motion, a second, any further discussion, counsel?
Very, very thankful.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both say. Thank you, counsel. We'll move on to the committee before that thing, and first committee I have is the Development and Local Infrastructure Committee.
Mayor and council, members of the public. We're a very important, important point in our history as a modern city, a modern professional city. It makes me so proud when we have a professional staff and we have multimillion dollar projects like the Coca-Cola bombing plans, Piedmont, Fuddles, Chick-fil-A, all commend the work of our staff. Nothing makes me prouder than why I speak to residents in our community when they likewise say that they are proud of the work that our development staff is doing. Knowing that they're building our residents, which is one of our small news. This is in contrast to when you stand in front of 50 or 60 residents who are having issues receiving their common properties from the people that develop their communities or ha- or having issues with the problems related to the construction or to other issues around the building of these communities. We have two landmore projects now that are coming close to an end. One of those is the Piedmont Village project, and the other is the Gateway, uh, to the Mountains project, which were both approved in the same meeting in 2018. As a matter of fact, I was involved in both those motions, and I was excited about the possibilities and the promises that were made around those two developments. I believe the council agrees that our progression and our professionalism is it's time that we hold people accountable for what they have committed to us when they bring these projects to our community. Please undertaking a huge project with a comprehensive plan, which will ultimately hopefully instill impact fees for our developers so that they can invest in the future of our community. That's how we pay for our infrastructure. That's how we maintain it. That's how we develop it. We must assure that these residents have good streets, private or not. And we must ensure that their amenities are satisfactory and meet the letters of the law, either local, state, or federal laws. I don't see how anyone can argue otherwise. If this council, not some single individual, has agreed to take on roads as public, then we should do so. And if the original intent was for public roads, we need to facilitate that ownership. We appropriately recently did so with Piedmont Village, even though there are, there is still work to be done on accommodating the runoff of those roads. And each case may take special evaluation and subsequent action. Recently, I met with a group of residents at Gateway to Mountains. They have a major issue in receiving their common properties from the developer of those properties. The most significant of which is their roads. Since that time, I've done tremendous amount of personal research with the ETP website. I've also talked to staff about this and indigently discovered that there's a possibility those roads were intended to be public when that, uh, development was begun. And out of committee, I would like to ask staff to research that matter to see if indeed the roads were intended to be public. And if they were, I would recommend that come before council for a decision. Thanks very much.
Thanks, sir. Each pastor? Politics and administration.
Uh, in your package, you'll find financial statements, uh, any questions you have on those, uh, full of suggestions. They're all the lensing, uh, on it. Uh, also tremendous amount of work going in right now on, uh, twenty-six budget activity. I think there is a, a Thursday event, a Thursday event on that that, uh, Anna and I will be attending and, uh, play a bunch of information available as quickly as possible.
Thank you. General brass committee?
Yep. Jim? Um, our sewer plant project is complete, uh, closed out. Proud of having it finished.
That's good.
Other projects going on, uh, sewer rehab that we've done last week. I think we've, uh, received some information on that recently, uh, water treatment plant, I believe is about to go up the bid. Is that quite, uh, up based? Is that correct?
Hardly out to bid.
Okay, thank you, uh, Kim. Um, so, so a lot of infrastructure stuff going on to the, to around eight million dollars, I believe now. Chief of staff.
Light, deep, parks are properties.
You just got to give a kudos to the city staff last week before Marvel Fest. They were like ants running all over the city of, kind of with, with weed whackers taking care of, uh, these parks and roadways, uh, street, their sidewalks. I mean, they were all over the place, but even way inside, that I believe, and so just wanted to commend them, uh, for that. And then also want to ask our city manager about how the meeting went for the, uh, lights that were at Jasper City Park. But, uh, go the way.
Went really well. Um, we have already paid Georgia Power, so we are probably in week three of a five-week turnaround. So hopefully, the idea was by the time, time changes, hopefully they'll be installed, uh, the three security lights.
Perfect, thank you.
You want to check out where those are?
Yeah, so we were looking up near them by the parking lot, so we're by the tennis courts over at Jasper City Park. Um, it's been dark there for too long, so decided to add some light, add some safety. Um, so this is, uh, exciting to see.
Thank you, sir.
I just tell everybody that Jasper, enjoy our parks. Uh, we've got some unusual parks, don't get about the door screaming. Our guys will get where rather than bikes, uh, playground, other than, or the city park is definitely get used. Uh, leaving our truaries used as last weekend. So I think the parks get pretty busy and I think our crews have done a great job of keeping clean and, and, and making it look, look nice. And, uh, after I've walked in today, I said.
Thanks, sir. All in favor?
Well, I'd like to thank our public safety fire, the police for the job well done here at our Marvel Festival, keeping our parade, our five K, even though we're there safely. Safe and, and, um, wonderful, thank goodness. So, you know, these guys really work hard and, and we just really appreciate that, what we're doing, and that we worked the job you have done. Also, you got this?
Yes, ma'am, yeah. Oh, okay. Uh, I, uh, I, first off, my, uh, I've got two young girls and one of them is involved in a good Girl Scouts unit. And so they approached me a few weeks ago asking for, uh, if we had a female police officer to come out to help them, uh, talking to. So they're, they're currently doing that right now, I'm sitting here with you. Uh, but I really just wanted to commend Sergeant Schrader with our police force for volunteering their time to go out to talk to the young ladies in the community. It means a lot to me, so, so thank you, chief, for staff, for supporting. And outside of that fire, uh, can't forget about those guys. They're hosting a fire officer, uh, board class and they'll be leading it and having multiple surrounding agencies come into that. And then of course, community engagement there too. They're, they're hitting it out of the park here with it. Uh, they're going to have a Home Depot Safety Day, uh, the same day as Zombie Fest, where they'll be showing demonstrations, uh, touch a truck and provide fire safety information to the public. Um, so they're doing a lot of great things on the community.
It helps found out was a great, great attendance.
Yes.
That was really good and I think that's a, a good for the kids to see that and, and realize that y'all are their friends and not their enemies. So thank y'all for all the hard work you have to do for that and the city staff as well.
Thank you. Ready? City manager comments?
So nothing, um, major, mayor, just wanted to, uh, echo the sentiments of counsel. I get the pleasure of working with, uh, the staff, uh, daily. And I know for the public, uh, you may or may not have a mixed bag relative to local government. Being in the profession as a practitioner for two decades, um, I can say with some bit of authority that the folks that we do have in their leadership roles are par nine, some of the best that you will find in any city in the state of Georgia. Uh, I have been in this state my entire existence thus far. I've dealt with about seventy different communities, um, some in Atlantic Commission, some in metro area. And I say this with the utmost sincerity, that the amount of time that we spend to make sure that when you do have an event that goes on, uh, this past weekend, that you all are there to enjoy and not to think about the things that we sit and cry over, think over, fight over to make sure that the only thing you go to do is enjoy it. So please, 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 uh, continue to just be mindful that, uh, although you may not know some of the things that we have relative to all the events, uh, we are taking them very serious from a public safety, from the organizational, from a celebratory aspect. Uh, and I just wanted to commend counsel for his continued investment into our leaders and into our staff because without them, uh, I can tell you that the alternative is that the folks attending these things will have to then think about the unthankables that we spend our time paying. So beyond that, I, uh, nothing for the good of the order there.
Just Kim, you have anything on your mind?
Yes, sir.
City council comments? Next item. Counsel, yield the floor to y'all.
I'd like to take a moment and, uh, recognize, uh, my goddaughter moved away, uh, from Jasper and her family moved away from Jasper last month. Mayor Greg Taylor and her parents, Max and Ellie, who moved to Kansas City to be with their son. Uh, and I just want to recognize Max started in this community in nineteen eighty-four when my family moved here as minister at the time, Bethel's Church. Maintained the residence here, uh, until last month. Uh, just want to recognize them, what a contribution every member of that family was to this community.
We'll miss them all.
We will miss them.
And yes. Counsel, you have a comments?
Yeah, I have one. There are our own Angela Rhymer, who is sitting there today. So, uh, last month, I was having a hard time with a lot of bad news and a lot of things going on in our country. Um, but I just wanted to talk about the impact that our, all kept on me. Uh, it was an amazing night with so much bad going on. It was just good to reflect in our whole city about all the positive things that were there. People from all walks of life gathering around, just having a great evening. So thank you for your support and hosting that event in our city.
Thank you, that was so unexpected, I'm tearing up, thank you.
It's marvelous to get done, so.
I think your daughter's got in the drum circle.
Yes, they did, they were over there, which was amazing because I just got to stand there for thirty minutes without having to worry about chasing them anywhere. Thank you for your help with that.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it, thank you.
Counsel, let me further comments. What? Go to mayor comments. Um, I'm going to echo what a lot of you've already said, our com Marvel Festival was phenomenal. Um, thank you to the chamber staff or the directors and all the volunteers. Without the volunteers, it, it would not have been possible. Um, it was a phenomenal event. National Night Out, as you mentioned, was a huge success. So thank you to our staff and public safety at the talent. To the DDA, uh, that was with us, our friend that are with us now, thank you for continuing the effort to dig deeper and do more. I appreciate that, um, a lot. And as mentioned earlier, our park improvements, not only around lighting, um, city staff has always looked at any other ways to improve parks. And I know that Ms. Kim has been working on other items. And so as we continue to work on our parks, you'll see slow and steady improvements. Ladies and gentlemen, I believe the next item on our agenda is an executive session for real estate handling. Counsel, entertain a motion to go into an executive session for real estate handling. I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Vote a second.